... channel by anybody who's not here. We don't have a long agenda tonight, but I think what we're doing this evening is important. And I want to welcome Mr. Barger's class here tonight. It's always great to see students at City Hall and observe their government working for them. Like every meeting, we'll start by reciting the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. So I invite everybody to stand and bow their heads and we'll go through that.
Father, Lord in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Look, may I have a roll call, please?
Good evening, Council. Tevinoff?
Here.
Krebs?
Here.
Lucy DiTillo?
Here.
Shaffer?
Here.
Chatham has an excused absence. Bartlet?
Here.
And Dan DiTillo?
Here.
All right, Council, if you had an opportunity to review the minutes from February the 21st, if so, entertain a motion to approve them.
I move that the minutes be approved as written.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Well, fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, well, let's start first with the swearing in. Two new police officers for Madison Police Department. I'd like to invite Chief John Walz.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Before we do so, I'd like to start off by saying, I know probably everybody's familiar with the situation we had at the Madison Junior High School today about 8:00 a.m. We received, Central Dispatch received a call of a serious threat that had been made to our junior high school. Obviously, officers responded quickly, secured the facility as fast as we possibly could, as safely as we could, and conducted an investigation. And as of just a few minutes ago, we were able to take two juveniles into custody as a result of the investigation. And they're being charged obviously with the intimidation of our school. But just wanted to give everybody an update. These are very alarming when they happen. But I can just say, law enforcement's response was amazing. Our parents, our students were outstanding. And obviously, this is something that we take very seriously. But through a lot of good, hard work by our detectives and our department, with the Sheriff's Department, State Police, Indiana Conservation, our Fire Department helped secure the perimeter. So we appreciate all that. But it has been resolved and we do have to in custody. So we appreciate everybody's assistance and understanding and help. And the school system was amazing as well. Just wanted to bring you guys up to date. So now I'd like to call up to the podium, Mr. Bradley Demery and Mr. Ryan Ware. We have two officers who are going to swear in tonight. They're both Tier One officers, meaning that they're both Academy graduates. They can, we can get them out on the streets obviously very quickly. They also bring a lot of other positives with them as well. Field Training Officer Programs and just other specialty fields. So I think Madison's going to be very fortunate to have these two young men serving on our department. And we're certainly glad to get them. So at this point in time, I'd like to ask Ryan and Bradley. God dang, these guys are good. See, I'm looking around and I was going to call them up and they're already right behind me. Stealthy, aren't they? All righty, so if you'd like to, Ryan, since you're up front, if you want to go first, just step out the front of the podium and the mayor will swear you in.
Welcome to Sheriff's Department. Is welcoming new police officers to Madison or in some instances returning police officers to Madison Police Department. Since you're for God, it's a noble profession. And so critical everything we, as Council and Mayor's Office are accomplishing for our safety. Welcome, Ryan. You'll raise your right hand, please, with the hand after me. Aye, Ryan Ware.
Aye, Ryan Ware.
If so, let's swear.
If so, let's swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of a police officer for the State of Madison Police Department. With the best of my ability?
With the best of my ability.
And according to law?
According to law.
Well, yeah, congratulations.
Right, before we move on to Bradley, I was calling Bradley. He really likes Brad, but he's stuck with Bradley with me. So it's an affection of Bradley. If you'd like to step up the podium, maybe tell the Council and tell the citizens a little bit about yourself and your experience. You're bringing to the city.
My name is Ryan Ware. I've been a police officer for six years. I started my career at the Floyd County Sheriff's Department. And I recently was at the Scottsburg Police Department. I was born and raised in Jeffersonville, and I currently reside in Scottsburg with my girlfriend Jennifer and our three kids. I did, also did six years in the Army National Guard.
I'd like to reintroduce Bradley Demery. Bradley, if you'd step up here.
Aye, Bradley Demery.
Aye, Bradley Demery.
If so, let's swear.
If so, let's swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of a police officer for the City of Madison Police Department.
Of a police officer for the City of Madison Police Department.
With the best of my ability?
With the best of my ability.
And according to law?
And according to law.
For the God of the United States of America. Congratulations.
Bradley, would you mind introducing yourself to the Council and say a few things about your experience?
Some of y'all may know me. My name's Brad Demery. I started as a police officer here in Jefferson County in 2012. Moved on to the Sheriff's Department and then the City Madison Police Department. And then in 2021, I resigned to take care of some family issues. After those were all taken care of, I resubmitted an application and ultimately was hired and standing before you today. So I'd like to thank you guys for this opportunity and having me back.
Okay, Council, thank you for allowing us to do this and excited about the future of these two young men. And I think they'll certainly serve us well. Thank you, guys.
Well, it's a tremendous benefit too, Chief, for them to already be officers that can begin their duties right away.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, it takes about a year for a person that's not a police officer to get them hired, get them through all the process and get them street ready. So to have these gentlemen come in, bring their experience and be able to get them out onto the road fairly quickly is just a huge benefit. So we're glad to have them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief. Right now, you've probably noticed that there was a sign-in sheet being circulated. We're going to recess the City Council meeting right now for a few minutes and hold a public hearing with regards to the alley vacation for 117 Ferry Street. If there's anybody here who would like to make a remark or do you want to, I don't know if you want to introduce the?
Yeah, I could just kind of.
Introduce the topic at least.
Talk about this a little bit. This is an alley, a platted alley, that is somewhere between the, what used to be the Shrimp House and their parking lot. It is virtually all one piece of property and has been maintained that way for some time and has been done that. So, and in the deed dating back at least 60 years, there's been a reference to this portion and this alley as being part of this entire property. However, we could not find through a title search any action that was ever recorded or taken by the City Council. So I think really this is cleaning up something that was probably done a long time ago. And we're just making it official. I believe that there may be some potential prospects for the sale of this property. And so we're cleaning this up in order to help facilitate that and move forward.
And the alley vacation request was reviewed by the Board of Public Works and Safety at its regular meeting on February the 21st and took official action recommending the vacation of said alley.
So anybody have any questions? Any questions from the public? Okay, we'll have a.
Joe, one question.
Yep.
It's noted between two parcels where the Shrimp House was. Does that alley extend to the two parcels behind that as well?
When you say behind?
Or to the west of it?
To the west.
Towards Riverboat?
You know, I'm not 100% sure. We've not been asked that. There is a creek that divides. And so.
Want to comment on that at all, Jim, or?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
It may go back there. I'm not 100% sure.
I didn't see where it did, but Jim can comment on that.
I'm Jim, real estate broker, and I have the Shrimp House listed for sale. And as a part of the purchase agreement for this property, the potential purchaser wanted that alley vacated. We did the search on this and so forth to try to find if it had been vacated previously. As Joe said, it appears in the language of the deed that it has been vacated, but we couldn't find any official record of the vacation of that alley. It appeared to me when we first started searching that, that the alley, so the property, those lots used to be, I forget how wide they were, but there were 20, I don't know, 18, 19, 20, up through 29 or something. But it was the Shrimp House property was 80 feet of the east side of said lots. And then with the plat map, was one parcel to the west side of the creek. Well, since we've started this process, the hotel has sold and the previous owner retained two lots. So those two lots have been platted now on the GIS and were never platted before. So I cannot tell you if that alley extended through there. It doesn't go anywhere if it does. It's maybe 40 feet long if it does. So it does not go anywhere. So we're not exactly sure on that. But this alley was from Ferry Street. If you came off Ferry Street, it would run west for 80 feet. And then the creek was approximately the border of the west line of the Shrimp House property.
Jim, it's between the parking lot and the?
Creek.
Building and creek.
Yes, so it's between, the alley would run east and west, north of Vaughn Drive, south of the building.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Thanks. Thank you, Jim.
The first resolution that we have is Resolution Number 3C-2023, a resolution accepting the dedication of a certain street within the City of Madison. Whereas a recent commercial development known as the Shops at Sunrise Crossing is nearing completion. And whereas the Economic Development Agreement signed by the developer Madison Plaza Group LLC and the City of Madison on the first day of March 2022, the developer shall designate, grant, and transfer to the City of Madison a developed portion of said property dedicated as a city street. And whereas the developer shall transfer the proposed roadway to the City of Madison as more fully described in Exhibit A attached here too. And whereas the said development and roadway is further described and depicted in a survey recorded on November 17, 2022 as instrument number 202204865, as Track 5 of the Warranty Deed recorded on December 7, 2022. And whereas said street shall be dedicated and utilized for public use and shall hereafter be considered property of the City of Madison. And whereas the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana agrees to accept said property to be utilized as a public street, hereby declares that said street shall be named Sunrise Crossing Boulevard and shall be added to the city's existing street and road inventory. Now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana as follows. The Common Council of the City of Madison hereby accepts the dedicated street described herein and authorizes the mayor to execute requisite documents upon completion of inspection of the road. That the street, as accepted pursuant to this resolution, shall be added to the City of Madison's existing road and street inventory and shall be maintained the same manner as all other roads and streets within the city's jurisdiction. That the street accepted herein shall be named Sunrise Crossing Boulevard and shall continue to be named as such until changed by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana. That this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its date of its adoption by the Common Council of the City of Madison, signature of the mayor, enrollment in the book of ordinances. So this is a resolution. If Mr. Steinhardt wants to address any questions, but it's just in keeping with the progress regarding the Sunrise Shops and the economic development agreement that we had. And this is just kind of the formalization of accepting that road dedication.
Sponsored by Councilman Chief.
Yeah, this is the first step in that process. Ultimately, when the road is completed, as the resolution states, our city engineering firm will inspect the road to make sure it was built within our standards. The base is down now. During each is in, it'll start to be asphalted here in April. The real meat of this resolution though is the fact that that would be called Sunrise Crossing Boulevard. That portion east of Michigan Road.
May I just ask, will this road come out and meet another road? Like, is it a four-way stop?
Yes, we had the stoplight there as we planned at the intersection of Crestwood Drive and Michigan Road. So to the west at that intersection, if you turn left, if you're headed north and turn left, you would be entering on Crestwood. If you turn right, as you're going back to the shops and/or the residences, you would be turning onto Sunrise Crossing Boulevard. It's not uncommon practice throughout communities to have streets meet that don't have the same name.
Are there any other questions from the Council? From a formal standpoint, can we get a motion to approve in a second?
Motion that we approve, Resolution Number 3C-2023 as written.
I'll second. Okay. Are there any comments or questions from the public regarding this? Seeing and hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Tevinoff?
Yes.
Krebs?
Yes.
Lucy DiTillo?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
And Dan DiTillo?
Yes.
The next ordinance is in reference to the alley vacation. It's the first reading on Ordinance Number 2023-3, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, vacating a portion of a certain alley in the City of Madison, Indiana. Whereas petitioner Scott, how do you pronounce it? Kerner. And Susan Kerner presently own real estate located in the City of Madison, Indiana, Jefferson County. Said real estate being situated at 920 East Vaughn Drive. Whereas petitioner has proposed to the City of Madison vacate the following alley that lies between the petitioner's parcel number as listed in the legal descriptions listed. Whereas the Board of Public Works and Safety of the City of Madison, Indiana's regular meeting held on February the 21st, 2023, pursuant to a request by petitioner, took official action recommending the vacation of said alley to the extent set forth above. And whereas plotted streets and alleys may be vacated within municipality in accordance with Indiana Code 36-7-3-12. And pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-3-12, concerning the vacation of public rightways required, notice of public hearing before the Common Council has been given pursuant to Indiana Code 5-3-1-2. Advertisement of notice of hearing by publication of the Madison Courier, newspaper of general circulation in the City of Madison, which notice and proof of publication are on file with the Office of the Clerk Treasurer of the City. And whereas adjacent landowners have been notified of said vacation pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-3-12. Now therefore be ordained by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, that pursuant to the recommendation of the Board of Public Works and Safety at its regular meeting on February 21st, 2023, the Common Council hereby adopts an ordinance vacating the above described alley. That the following alley is hereby vacated and as a public alley. The City of Madison hereby reserves for its benefit or the benefit of any private utility which is present, which may presently have utilities located above or upon or above the described alley in the easement for public or private utilities located upon, above, described alley and for the maintenance, replacement, improvement, and repair thereof. The City of Madison further reserves for its benefit or for the benefit of any private utility authorized by the City of Madison in easement allowing for future underground utilities to be installed, maintained, repaired, and replaced in said vacated alley. The Clerk Treasurer of the City of Madison, upon its final adoption of this ordinance and signature of the mayor, shall cause a certified copy of this alley vacation ordinance to be entered upon the transfer of records in the auditor of Jefferson County and further recorded in the deed of records of the officer or the recorder of Jefferson County. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately from and after its page, passage, enrollment, and signature by the mayor. So that is on first reading and we'll go on to second reading at the next meeting. The next ordinance on first reading is the establishment of the Aviation Rotary Fund. This is Ordinance Number 2023-4, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, establishing the Aviation Rotary Fund. Whereas the City of Madison previously adopted an ordinance creating the Board of Aviation Commissioners for the purpose of oversight and governance of the City of Madison Municipal Airport. And whereas the City of Madison Airport currently provides and sells aviation-related fuels and lubricants. And whereas the Common Council desires to create an Aviation Rotary Fund pursuant to Indiana Code 8-22-2-7C. And whereas all funds received from the sale of fuel and lubricants purchased with funds from the Aviation Rotary Fund shall be turned over at least once a month to the Clerk Treasurer to remain in the Aviation Rotary Fund to be checked against the Board of Aviation Commissioners as other appropriations are dispersed for the sole purposes of purchasing fuel, lubricants, for sale of public in the operation of the airport. And whereas at the end of each fiscal year, the Board of Aviation Commissioners shall present a detailed statement to the fiscal body showing the amount of money received, paid, and paid over to the Clerk Treasurer to credit the Aviation Rotary Fund and also showing the amount of fuels and lubricants on hand. Whereas the Board of Aviation Commissioners is free to transfer any profits from the Aviation Rotary Fund into the Aviation General Fund that may be used for the operation of airport or grant matching funds. And whereas if at the end of the fiscal year, the accumulated Aviation Rotary Fund plus the value of inventory of fuels, sales, and lubricants on hand exceeds the total previous appropriation to the Aviation Rotary Fund by 25%, the excess shall be turned over to the Aviation General Fund. And whereas the Aviation Commissioner shall direct and request an appropriation from the Airport Non-Reverting Fund in an amount necessary to establish this Aviation Rotary Fund. Now therefore be ordained by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, that the Aviation Rotary Fund is hereby established in accordance with Indiana Code 8-22-2-7C. This ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption of the Common Council, signature of the mayor, enrollment in the book of ordinances, and publication required by law. Just for a little background, this is a fund that's allowable pursuant to the statute. And the whole purpose is to essentially track fuel sales and to determine what the profits are and things of that nature. The airport is currently undergoing some changes with regard to the way that they've been operating. You will, after this, sometime relatively soon, likely be receiving a request for appropriations. The airport, I think by its own admission, probably has not been doing some of the requests for appropriations quite correctly. And we're cleaning a lot of that up and they are doing that and working through that. But this is just a fund, kind of a set aside fund, to help them kind of separate fuel sales and things that relate to that so they can keep a better track of that and a better eye on that. So we'll move that on to second reading at the next meeting.
Thank you, Joe. Council, are there any reports or recommendations or other business of standing in select committees by City Council? Hearing none, we'll move to reports of city officials. And we've asked our Clerk Treasurer, Rampy, to give a treasurer's report tonight.
Good evening, Council. I included with your packets a finalization from REDI Financial. And hopefully you've had a time to review that. I wanted to let you know that the General Fund has been fully reconciled. And we continue to work with REDI on reconciling the remaining funds and it is very close to completion. There is no statutory deadline for closing the year. But there was a statutory requirement to publish it. So that's why it was in the paper. The end of the year balances for the General Fund was $426,217. And the city's year-end bank balances exceeded 18 million. The annual financial report was required to be submitted in Gateway by 3/1. And we were able to meet that goal successfully. If there are any changes necessary to the final report because of the completed reconciliation, we can request that that be reopened and fulfill that. And finally, it's our intention and goal to have a fund and appropriation reports to you by the next City Council meeting on 3/20. Any questions?
Okay, you want to just outline the timeline and important milestones?
Absolutely.
I think that's a good.
The tentative timelines, of course, the first was noted was the March 1st deadline to get the annual financial report entered into Gateway. In the month of April, REDI is planning on scheduling a meeting with all of you to review year-end 2020 data and possibly quarter 1, 2023 data as well. One of the things that we had to commit to in the State Board of Accounts Audit Exit Conference was we needed to implement better internal control policies. And so when I wrote my recommendations or what the city would be doing to amend our previous issues, we stated that we would have those completed and to you before May 1st. So we will be working with REDI in order to get that presented to you in the form of an ordinance by April the 18th.
Is the complete 1782 notice available on Gateway or is that?
The 1782 notice that we received is, yes.
It's on Gateway. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was completed several months ago?
Yeah.
For your 2023 budget? Yeah, and I'll just add a couple of things. And you know, the City of Madison already has an adopted internal control policy. But over time, it needs to be updated and that's what she's referring to is the update to the internal control policy. And then one of my statutory responsibilities is to give Council an annual review of the financial condition of the city. And I'll be doing that on Thursday at the State of City address. With more details than what Katie had described here, but I'll also be using the same information that she was sharing with you with our fund end, year-end fund balance reports and appropriation reports. Any questions for our treasurer, Clerk Treasurer for her update? A lot of work's gone into that, Katie. Thank you for all your efforts and work with REDI and Mindy as well on that process.
Yes, Mindy's been a huge asset for our office and then the new staff that we've recently acquired, Melissa Enstrom, she has a tremendous amount of experience in accounts payables, accounts receivables, and she's doing a fantastic job. Shannon Williams comes from a banking background and she's been, done a fantastic job as well. And we have Karen Skillman, who has had a variety of backgrounds, but recently moved to Madison. She worked for several firms in Chicago. So she's also been another fantastic asset. All have just jumped in and started ensuring things are getting done, which is very much appreciated. They're a great staff to have.
Thank you, Katie. Moving on, we do not have any bills on second or third reading. And we'll now open up the floor to any public comments. If anybody's here who would like to address the Mayor's Office and City Council, please come to the podium, identify yourself, name and address, and what's on your mind?
Hello, my name is Charles Gaddy and I am with the Unified Senior Citizens of Jefferson County. My partner, Bill Bowden, who's with Dry My partner, Bill Bowden, who's with Dry Dock, is not with me tonight. What it is, is we are providing services for Jefferson County. We're also looking for a building on the hilltop. We've got a lot of plans for Jefferson County, such as bringing back kneels on wheels for Jefferson County, ride shares for senior citizens to and from hospitals, to include the Louisville area. As you all know, Dry Dock is helping with AA. We also want to provide that services for the senior citizens. We're looking to bring in a lawyer to help with, you know, the legal aspects for seniors and AA as well. So that's basically what we are doing right now. The seniors are new to Jefferson County itself. They've been around for a while, but this one is the new one. We've got a lot on our plate, so we're hoping to get help from this town along with Hanover. Basically, that's what we've got right now going on. So I appreciate your all's help and support and we hope to see you all in the future. Thank you.
Charles, thank you for being here. I just have a question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And that is, which senior, kind of in our Jefferson County community, are you specifically targeting? Or is it senior, and what types of services are going to be provided to seniors?
We are targeting fifty-five and older is what we're targeting. I've gotten with Gary Hewitt here-
Carlos, sorry, we're in that group now.
Yeah, we've targeted, we've contacted Gary Hewitt here in Madison and he's on board with what's going on. We've gotten in touch with the seniors in Hanover, so they know what's going on. And as soon as we find more senior groups, we get in touch with them, let them know what's going on. And hopefully they come on board and understand what's going on and hopefully they come and help or we try to help them out. That's what we're trying to do. So we're getting the word out there slowly and it's real slow, so we're working on it.
Well, thank you for serving our community, Charles.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Is anyone else here who would like to address mayor's office or city council? This is the part you've all been waiting for, not the motion to adjourn, but the mayor's updates. That's also about to happen. I did mention the State of the City on Thursday. We invite the entire community to that to just, you know, sort of celebrate all the achievements and the just fantastic direction our community is heading in and more importantly, celebrate all the people who are making that happen. I also want to send my condolences to the Carlo family and Josh's family here for the passing of one of their family members, Dave Carlo and Mary Rose's family. So Josh, our condolences to the Carlos, too. We have been continuing to work on some openings in our committee roster. We recently made two appointments to the Plan Commission. Those were county appointments to the City of Madison Plan Commission, with Rick Ferris and Zach Loughlin. We have a few openings still in our committee roster that we're working to fill. We had taken action yesterday at the City of Madison Board of Public Works for something we've been working almost a year on, and that is the execution of three grant agreements that will allow us to move forward with our partnerships for the Ohio Theater facade restoration, the Hanover-Madison Connector Trail with Hanover College, and the Heritage Trail. And then also a partnership with Historic Madison with their donation of the partial ground on Poplar Street for our bicentennial parking lot improvements. More to come there. We've submitted more projects from the Destination Madison Plan for the RDA to consider. And we're continuing to advocate for even more REDI grant dollars because it's been a phenomenal vehicle for economic development. Today at the Redevelopment Commission, we took the first steps toward creating a new TIF allocation area, which will be known as the Riverfront Allocation Area. That was unanimously passed by the Redevelopment Commission today. And will start making its way through the process for our amended redevelopment plan. It'll go through Plan Commission, city council, and then back for actual ratification by the Redevelopment Commission. But what that allows us to do is essentially strategically manage our TIF allocation revenues literally for the next thirty years. So it's a critical part of our strategic investment in the city. We're also doing some ordinance review that you'll see soon, streets and sidewalks. We talked about that in Board of Public Works yesterday. We have invested millions of dollars across the community in our streets and sidewalks. But they've been suffering in some instances from excavation by private contractors and utility works that frankly needs to be more closely monitored. And so we are not only updating our ordinance to deal with that and implement, I should say, the permit process that's defined in the ordinance, but also create best practices and reconstruction standards for the backfill as the excavation work is completed. And then we're also reviewing our garbage collection ordinance. Tomorrow, we will be attending a legislative dinner and meeting with our state legislators because we're halfway through the 2023 legislative session. And there's lots of bills that we've been closely monitoring and advocating for or against on behalf of the City of Madison. But it's been a very busy three months for the first part of the legislative session. There are some great things in there that we support. And then there was also some things that, working with AIM and our advocacy through AIM, are not going to pass. So we're just continuing to work on those things that are high priorities for City of Madison and Jefferson County as well as the state of Indiana. I will stop there and ask anybody if they have any questions for the mayor or if city council has any remarks to make before we adjourn. Thought Mindy was moving toward the, Mo was on the move. Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, March 21st. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. Appreciate it and welcome, our new residents of Madison. We look forward to seeing you around town.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All carefully say aye.
Aye.
Aye, folks. Thank you.
Mrs. Depmer, don't leave. I'm going to try to talk to you.